Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the February 12th, 2019 meeting, an informal work session, of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. The first thing on our agenda tonight is we have, or today, we have a swearing in of Mike Barnhart as our Deputy County Accountant, and that will be done by our Clerk Brian Van Bergen. So, Brian, if you want to come up, and Mike, you want to come up?
This would be a front so David could slide on. That's what you wanted, right? That was part of the job description, right?
Yes, apparently.
All right. If you would, I will stall until we get there. If you would, raise your right hand and repeat it after me. I, Mike Barnhart, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof, and that I will faithfully and honestly demean myself in the office of Deputy County Accountant, to which I have this day been appointed, and perform such duties as such Deputy County Accountant, to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you. Now, if I could have you sign here, we have an identical one that we have, and one that you can take home.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And this will be open now.
It's official now.
He's been sworn in twice, Deputy Treasurer and Deputy County Accountant.
Because he did with you, right? Didn't you do it at the same time?
No.
Oh, it was Justin.
What can we swear Mike in for next?
It wasn't really confusing you.
Thanks, sir. Good to see you.
Congratulations, Mike. In the near future, we won't have any more swearing in for you, bud.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, Commissioner, that takes us now to our work session, and this time is reserved for topics of discussion scheduled for the Commissioners in advance. If a session is not needed to balance the meeting, we'll begin at 1:30. But on our work session today, we do have a couple of different items discussed. We have a voter tally system, and that's from Brian Van Bergen. This was continued from January 15th, 2019. So, come on forward, Brian.
Good afternoon again.
Hello.
So, where did we leave off? So, the last time we met, we talked a little bit about an opportunity that we have, that the Yamhill County has, to repeat the automobile analogy, use the benefit of a Cadillac at a Chevrolet price. A couple of years ago, we purchased a new vote tally system from a vendor called Clear Ballot, and that's what I would like to refer to as the Chevrolet-priced vote tally system. After conducting two successful elections with that system, our former vendor came to us and offered their, what I refer to as the Cadillac version, at the same ongoing rate as we're paying currently with the Clear Ballot system. Their pricing model is one that would resemble a rent instead of a purchase, so the outright yearly cost would be no different, regardless of which direction we move forward from today. The yearly cost would be $24,000 whether we stuck with Clear Ballot, and that would include the software license agreement and maintenance on some contracts for the scanners. It is the same total price if we went with Hart's system, and the only difference would be, we would be, in essence, renting instead of using the license and gear that we've already purchased from Clear Ballot. A couple of the things that y'all asked last time were, can we do that? What do other counties say? What are our options? So, Christian and I have talked through a few of those points, and we hope to bring to you some answers that you'll appreciate. A number of years ago, if you go way, way back, there was a little election in the year 2000 where a couple of presidential candidates were neck and neck, and there were some disputes in some little state called Florida. After that whole thing, the federal government created what they call HAVA dollars, Help America Vote Act dollars. And from that was a huge migration from old punch-card vote tally systems toward electronic systems. Our county was one of those in 2006 that went towards the electronic version, and most other counties in Oregon dipped into the waters about that same time, 2006, 2007. With all electronic gear, those things have short life cycles, and about the same time, 10 years later, counties in Oregon started looking for new options. Most of the counties in Oregon were with a product called ESNS. We were one of the four counties in Oregon with Hart at the time, a couple of years ago. And through that, a number of counties went through a full round of RFQs. Multnomah County did an RFQ with all the vote tally systems. Washington County did, Clackamas County did, Marion County did. Multnomah, Washington, and Clackamas have in their contracts the ability for other counties to join in and purchase under their contracts. Marion County unfortunately did not. So, one of your questions a few weeks ago was, can we jump on the bandwagon from one of those original RFQs? And the answer is kind of. We can jump onto Clackamas Counties. I've given Christian the 317-page document. The good news is, is that it is full, and it is robust. The bad news is, is that the deal that we are being offered is so much less, that it doesn't actually meet the guidelines for matching exactly. In order to jump on another RFQ like that, our pricing and the items that we are to receive should match those, or be at least resembling the different sizes of counties that we are. So, we then revert to Yamhill County's purchasing ordinance, ordinance 761. So, if you dive into Yamhill County's purchasing ordinance, 761B21, one of the items that Yamhill County allows to be purchased without the competitive bid process, and I will read, "Contracts for purchase of lease of ballots, ballot pages, ballot cards, or equipment necessary to conduct elections." So, Yamhill County does already have in place written authorization for our office to buy whatever we need to, to conduct an election, without getting the traditional minimum three bids. So, we're kind of okay jumping on the Clackamas bid, but not fully. This ordinance does cover us, but the reality of the fact that we sit here today is there are only three choices. There are only three vendors that are certified to sell vote tally systems in Oregon: ESNS, Hart, and Clear Ballot. ESNS's price is well out of reach for us, for our size of county. Clear Ballot, we know what that price is, and Hart's price is today the same price per year moving forward with no out-of-pocket cost to make the migration. So, that's a roundabout sort of way of answering some of your questions. Trying to remember where I've missed answering some of your other questions.
I think, Brian, a couple of questions I had is, and I know you've been talking to Chris, you know, this has been that the contract we're currently under with Clear Ballot, as far as getting out of that, reason for cause, or do we have reasons for cause to get out of that contract?
Fortunately, with Christian's help in crafting our agreement, all we need is 30 days' notice. We don't have to have met any qualifiers. We don't have to have anything other than a written statement mailed to them that we're ending our relationship.
My second question has to do with basically the hardware, the scanners and everything. We purchased the scanners, but, and then we leased the software through Clear Ballot, and we have the maintenance through Clear Ballot. Are these, and these are fairly expensive scanners?
The two scanners that we have are Fujitsu scanners. They're about $10,500 each.
So, do these scanners, will they work with the new system, or do we basically have to give up on those scanners and get new scanners again?
No, and no. We do not have to get rid of the Fujitsu's, but we cannot use the Fujitsu's with the Hart system. Hart's, so, one of the problems that we'll run into with some of the other questions is, everything that is touching the vote tally system must be federally certified. So, with Clear Ballot, they chose four different scanners to present with their system to the federal government. So, they had a teeny-tiny desktop, a next range up, the one that we have, and a super Mac Daddy one. And those are the only four scanners that you can use with Clear Ballot. The other systems are the same way. With Hart, they have a Canon, smaller, a medium-sized Canon, and a larger Canon. Fortunately, the Canon scanners that work with Hart are scanners that we already have in our building right now, that we're using for recording documents. So, our plan would be to just switch the scanners. So, we would move our Fujitsu scanners to use in our records management side, and then migrate the Cannons that we're using for recording today to our elections.
Okay, so there won't be, there won't be basically any additional hardware costs?
Correct. And if we chose to, we could sell our scanning stations for Clear Ballot to other counties.
Okay, I think the only other last question I have is, as you went through the RFPs when we got Clear Ballot, you know, and you went through all this, what do you, and we used Hart before, what do you feel real confident that is the Hart system, the new Hart system we're putting in, does it fulfill all the needs? I know we had problems with, what was it, color borders or color tags and stuff on the Clear Ballot system. Does the Hart system fulfill our needs, and has it all been tested to fulfill our needs?
Yes, the color borders are one of those failings on the Clear Ballot. There is, there's an inability for Clear Ballot to allow color borders. The Hart system does allow that. It's a visual identifier for our staff to see one version of a ballot style compared to another. Clear Ballot doesn't allow that. Hart's does. One of the benefits to going with Hart is two of our neighboring counties are currently using the same system, both Marion County and Clackamas County. So, I've seen both of those new systems in, both of those counties in action. But we also brought in a demonstration set of equipment into our building a couple of months ago. We built an election with our data on the Hart gear. We created ballots, we voted ballots, we ran through the adjudication, and produced results. So, I personally have created and worked through on their new system, and I know it works.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Casey, you have any questions?
No, I took the liberty of asking Brian a lot of questions yesterday, so, but I appreciated the time, and I've learned more, so.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Yes, Brian, so when you talk about basically the Hart system being a rental setup type of thing, in terms of Clear Ballot or purchase, what are we out if we go forward with Hart?
We have 100, in rough terms, we have $150,000 worth of electronics sitting in our basement.
And they can be sold for, can they be sold?
Theoretically, yes. My best-case scenario would be working with Clear Ballot to find another county that is on the verge of moving into a new system, and selling them our used system 20%, 25% off of what we paid for. That's my guess at the moment. I don't have an answer for whether or not we can even dream to get that much out of it. Another option that Christian and I have toyed around with, but do not yet have written confirmation on, is simply mothballing the system, keeping it in our basement in case something doesn't go right with Hart, and gives us a fallback to go to Clear Ballot. So, there are at least three options. One is an outright sale of the whole system to another county, another one is keeping it in our possession, and another is piecemealing it off. I know of at least two other Oregon counties that would take components of our systems. Multnomah County would take a couple of our adjudication stations, and Washington County would take one of our scan stations for a reduced price. But those are options that are available to us, that just haven't been nailed down yet, depending on whether Clear Ballot will allow us and all the details.
So, when you talk about cost-neutral, basically, between the two systems, so what we have into it, that would still cost us $24,000 a year for, what was it, maintenance, license agreements, things like that?
Yeah.
For Clear Ballot?
Yeah.
And Hart, what would be the initial outlay for that?
There is no initial outlay. It is a yearly.
That's the $24,000.
And it's a rental.
The Hart cost would be $22,861, and the reason that's different is because they want us to be responsible for providing the maintenance on the scanners. So, our service contract for the scanners brings us to the $24,000. So, it's two separate numbers with Hart, it's the $22,000 for the yearly fee, and then a maintenance contract for the scanners. With Clear Ballot, it's an all-inclusive price, both totaling $24,000.
Have we had IT weigh in to any degree on any of this?
No.
No. So, that's sort of out of their, is that out of their wheelhouse? Or is it just not something that they'd be conversant with, with these two systems?
They, that's a good news, bad news kind of thing. The good news is, the components that both of these companies use are off-the-shelf components that you can go down to Staples and get something that looks just like it. The workstations are just Dell workstations with their software on it. The monitors are just Dell monitors. The scanners are Fujitsu's that you can buy from Office Depot or Staples or whatever. So, that is actually what we've done with an older version of our scanners from the previous system, is we've just donated that scanner to the assessor's office. So, the hardware is something easily moved around in the county. So, if that scenario comes, the computers can be wiped and just rebuilt and used in another department. So, the good news there is, is that our county's IT department could rebuild a number of these components and use them for other things.
Thank you. Ken, did you want to weigh in?
Well, I was just going to add that, you know, because IT's participation's really been, I mean, this isn't equipment that's tied to the county network. It's not something that's backed up by the county network. So, it lacks that connection to the overall county system, and that's why, you know, this is, it's the vote tally system, so it's been, you know, it's Brian's.
Yeah.
But IT is always, you know, where needed, or if, you know, to provide support on any of the hardware issues. Because, of course, I mean, they could provide some assistance on the fly with the hardware, but up to this point, they have not been involved with this.
So, I guess, Ken or Brian, then, the, whether it be Clear Ballot or Hart system, the adjudication stations, the scanners, they're on a standalone network, all of their, all of their own, not tied into the county's network.
That's a great selling point to any of your constituents, by the way. There is, there is no.
Outside connection.
Yeah, there's no election system in use in Oregon that is connected to even their county's network, ours included. Ours, our computers are just connected to each other, not to anything outside that space where they sit today.
Yeah. I really appreciate that you're looking at these systems as well, just for what your employees, what the staff can do, and how much time it takes them to do it in other systems. So, I, yeah, that's a familiar refrain for me.
Okay. Mary, anything else?
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
So, Ken, what would our, Christian, what would our next step be from here?
I can talk with Brian, and we can take steps to solidify the offer and, you know, contract with Hart, and then look at what it will take to separate with Clear Ballot, just explore those options, and then we'll come back to the board presumably with the new Hart agreement for the board to consider and approve.
Okay. Sound like a sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
No, I think it's fairly straightforward, and the new Hart agreement is two pages, so it's fairly.
It's probably, because it's a rental agreement, it's not a lease.
Pretty simple.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, the next thing we have, I'm going to turn it over to our county administrator, and this is continued from February 5th, 2019, and this is on work schedule, work session scheduling. So, Ken, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, I'm going to take a shot at this, but we might be continuing again. You know, I did get some responses on some of the ideas. I haven't had a chance to, you know, to look for some of the common areas, so then we can start putting it, you know, where there's duplicate topics, you know, or matching topics, and, you know. I do know that there's two that I've noticed that are on the list, and it was on my list because we have a couple items that I'd like to get some dates scheduled because it was some timelines. One is the space needs analysis. That is something Justin and Joe are working on, the statement of work, preparing, whether or not we have to go out to RFP or not, is still up in the air, but I'd still like to hammer out what that, what that statement of work's going to look like. And, you know, because needless to say, when you're talking about a space needs analysis, we have to put some boundaries or define it, because otherwise, if it's, if it's just a wide-open discussion, you know. So, I'd like to, if the board is open to it, I'd like to come back, I was thinking March 19th or March 26th, to go ahead and schedule that. I think that would be plenty of time for them to have the statement of work ready to go and come before the board, and then that would still allow us time that if we do need to go out to RFP, we can start that whole process this year.
I take it, I take it, and I'll go to Justin, and you, Ken, with this. I take it there's other, other counties and other jurisdictions, like McMillville just completed their statement of work, and had just got theirs done, that we can probably borrow from to get a pretty good idea.
Already did.
Yeah, I figured you'd probably, figured you would.
Jeff Towery was nice enough to send me what they had just recently done, and there's a couple more that Justin's following up on and getting other examples as well. And we also have, as an example, we have the two previous ones that the county had done, the one in 2010 and then 2006.
Okay.
So, we'll have those, and if there's a particular date that would work for the board, would March 19th be okay, if we go ahead and schedule that?
March 19th. I don't have my computer here, but let me get my phone.
I must confess, it's empty right now.
And I'll tell you, usually I don't schedule anything for Tuesday afternoons anyway, so.
We'll go ahead and pencil that one in, then.
Sounds great.
Yeah. Then the second one?
And then the second one that I had, and this was something that had come up when Carrie and I had a meeting and talking to Abishaw. One of the things that SEDCor was supposed to be working on is the grant program. And so, we had a meeting yesterday, and we would like to come back and have a work session. Abishaw and Carrie are working on some of the basic framework of what the grant programs are going to look like, the strategic investment grants. And being able to define some timelines and process, and so, we're, they're working on putting together a draft. Carrie's done some work on it. And, you know, that one, because it does have budget implications as well, and telling me what we're going to budget for available funds within the Economic Development Fund. We have funds that are being held there right now. I know there's been questions because there weren't any grants awarded for this year. With the timeline and depending on how the process and going through and adopting this process, I don't know if we're going to award funds this budget year. You know, so, it might be the target that we'd be looking at having grant funds available after July 1 and having those funds budgeted. But it all depends on scope and what that, what that pencils out and what it looks like. So, that one, and talking to them, I think we were looking at mid to early March as well, so possibly March 12th.
Yeah, I think, to me, March 12th would be fine. I think what I'd like to be is at least in a position that we could go into the first year, since we do have that money, we didn't, we didn't do any grants this year. So, when we do our budget for next year, we'll know that, we'll know, have a firm figure going into July, of knowing what we can, how many strategic or what small ones we could do. And so, that does have a big budget implication, so I think that would be another good one for March.
Yeah, yeah. Earlier the better, I think.
So, I'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and pencil that one in for March 12th.
So, then, the people who've contacted us with interest in those grants going forward, we're just basically going to tell them we'll know something after March 12th, or we're looking at?
I think in March, because we talked a little bit about process, and we'll have to, and we'll circle back to that at the work session, you know, because of, with the fact that this program's going to release funds from our economic development, so how we get to, okay, this is what the grant program's going to look like, and here's the date and review period, the application period. We may be potentially opening up to applications during this budget year, but by the time you get to awarding the funds, it wouldn't be until July 1, or after July 1.
Yeah, that was my thinking, if we could, if we could settle in March and early April, and late April or early May, like, May 1st, open up the grants and then start awarding July, July 1st.
Right.
Because that'll, May and June, that'll give two months to get them out there.
Because we have the forms, we have the basic framework, it's just figuring, you know, coming here and meeting with the board and seeing, you know, what you want the program to look like, so then Abishaw and Carrie can go back and fine-tune it, and whether that needs to go through the Economic Development Advisory Council, did I get it right? And whether or not they need to review it and make a recommendation. I know they have, they've identified, you know, of having some type of a review committee, a subcommittee to that group to help with the review and the ranking of applications. a subcommittee to that group to help with the review and the ranking of applications. You know, so, it's going to define that whole process.
And we may have to form a committee and do, do all of that and stuff.
Right. All right, so, I'll pencil that one in. So, those were the two that I had, and I have two other lists. And I'm trying to think. I'm trying to think how to... So, what I'd like to do is sit down, because I still need to sit down and look at the other ones. Those are the two, unless there's, you know, on your list, if there's one in particular that you would like to-
I think when you get my list, Ken, you'll, you know, there's, there's probably one on there that I think probably should be done before we actually finished the budget process.
Okay.
And that's the allocate, the discretionary allocations.
Okay.
But, but other than that, all mine, most of mine could wait till after we get out of these and get through that.
Because I saw the note on the discretionary allocations. It's like I'm distracted. It's like something I said?
And Ken, you know, what's, one thing that I brought up last year, or a couple of years, for a couple of years, Ken, and your, just your idea that if we're going to do work sessions, you know, normally we schedule work sessions for 1:30 and then our normal informal meeting for 2 o'clock. It seems like we could hardly, there's two big subjects that I just don't think half an hour would be good for doing those. Because those could get pretty complicated. So, what's your idea about how long these work sessions should take? Do you have any idea?
I think it depends on the topic. You know, it can vary depending on the topic and if, if there's particular topics that you're wanting to invite other folks to come to the table or, you know, like if it's, you know, inviting somebody from an outside agency to, like a solid waste. And if you want to have somebody from DEQ come out and answer questions, you know, being able to schedule that time. And I think that's where we may have to look at modifying on how we do that.
How we do our agendas and everything.
Or how we schedule it. Maybe it's not for a Tuesday afternoon, but we may have to do it for a Wednesday morning or something along that, knowing how busy your schedules are. But recognizing that there might be some work sessions that we have to schedule for a specific time just based on the content, and there's going to be a lot of discussion.
Could we, if we have those work sessions that are particularly, you know, you know, complicated, just maybe start at 1 o'clock?
Yeah, I think we could start at 1. You know, I think, and I brought it before, there's other things we may be able to change the way we change Tuesdays' agendas, I don't know. But I'd like to, Ken, to maybe come up with some ideas of how we might be able to, like, one of the things we have on today is reviewing the formal agenda for Thursday, for Thursday. We might be able to make those kind of changes that may, maybe it'll shorten some of the business stuff we do on a Tuesday, to put it to a Thursday so we have more time to allocate it Tuesday, too. But I'd definitely look at Ken for his recommendations and what would work.
Yeah, and you see with the, you know, with the informal agendas that are out, what's kind of hoping is, you know, with the Thursday, like, for example, the formal session review, it's really a review for what should be on the consent and what shouldn't, you know, and not necessarily, unless there's a specific topic that the board would like to discuss that's on there. But kind of saving those discussions for Thursday, leaving it off the consent agenda and having the discussion on the agenda item. And then that way, you could dedicate-
Spend more time on Tuesdays.
Spend more time on, maybe on the work session. And, you know, the other thought is the department updates, you know, you know, revisiting the department updates and when those are conducted and how we do those, that, you know, maybe those are something we could move to Thursday at some point.
Boy, I think there's some citizens who would like to listen to some of the department updates and see, you know, what are going on in these various departments. And I think it'd be up to, I'd really look for you to make some of these recommendations of, if we have things that we put on the consent agenda now that we can move to Thursdays, like under new business or old business.
Right.
To give us more time on Tuesdays to, but I'd look for you to make some of those recommendations.
Can do. So, you know, kind of circling back, because you had mentioned like the discretionary allocation, you know, and revisiting on how we do that, but knowing that we do the discretionary allocations in December, is that something we would want to schedule later in the year?
And that could, that could vary, that could very well be.
You know, you know, just, I just wanted to make sure.
Before we get ready for the next, start the next budget cycle.
Right. You know, because I know we schedule a specific work session just for doing that.
Yeah.
You know, and whether we want to have a second, you know, or if we just want to table it for that time for the discretionary allocation.
That's probably one they could wait till after the 1st of July, I'd think.
Okay.
Because you want to talk about more than just specifics of dollars, I bet.
Yeah, it's more of doll, yeah, I want to talk about dollars and stuff like that. So, I think that could go wait till after we get this budget in place.
Because I know at this point, you know, with where we're at in the budget process and all the departments are currently building their budgets and things. And so, if we were going to modify that to a certain degree-
Yeah.
You know, the ripple effect is getting the word out to the departments and-
I heard a sad story yesterday at AOC, they're talking about budgets in Coos County. They're having a lot of problems collecting their tax dollars because they've lost so much of their economic base. They actually, and this was sad, they actually had to cut three $500 calculators out of their budget because they couldn't, for a department, because they just didn't have the money to pay for three $500 calculators. I think that's, that's pretty sad when, because they've lost so much timber revenue, too, that, that's pretty bad when you're making those decisions, so.
That must be one heck of a calculator.
That's what I was saying. I didn't, I was worried it would sound trivial. Thank you.
It must be a calculator on a PC or something, but anyway.
It's really big.
So, we got two scheduled then for March right now.
You know, but knowing that, because with the lists that you gave me, if there's a particular one that you want to talk about right now, or if you want to schedule right now, or if you're okay with me going through and looking both your lists.
Yeah, I think I had a couple of my lists, a couple bold faced, and those were the ones that I'd, I'd kind of like to get moved sooner. Later by sooner, I mean, they could be April or May. I'm not, I don't mean November, December, or February or March.
Maybe you should send me mine again, but with dancing letters.
Yes.
Well, I will say that there's some comment, you know, like, the, you know, the, trying to think, you know, the homeless issue seems to be a common theme, too. You know, I'm trying to think of, in looking at notes, you know, what that work session would involve. You know, I know that there's discussions about the car park program or some of the other programs. I don't know if we wanted to schedule something, if there was, you know, here in the next couple of weeks to talk, but the other part would be is trying to define that. So, we don't have too open of an agenda item for a work session, you know, but what those items might be that you, the board, may want to bring forward to Thursday to take action on or-
Right.
Some type of item. So, that was the other thing I, you know, put out there that I saw there. But if, I think that's all I have at this point.
Sounds like a good one to maybe start.
Maybe we get March or April. Yeah, that's, and I think, so, what I'd like to do is have a schedule, at least two months worth. Quarterly would be nice, but that way, we know that if we're going to schedule a work session, we can all have time to prepare, do research and everything. So, instead of deciding one day we're going to have a work session the next week, you know, so, I like that.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, gates is another one that has come up. So, a review of gates and-
And policies.
And policy around that. And that would be one that, you know, I know we have, you know, an agenda item or a discussion later this week on, on a couple gates. But if we're going to expand it, you know, I don't know how far out we need to go with scheduling something like that. Because depending on what parties we want to have coming and providing some input, whether it's BLM, warehouse, or private timber companies, private citizens that are, you know, depending on what kind of input or what you're looking at for that, but-
Okay.
So.
Anything else, Ken? You have any questions for Ken, Mary? No. Any questions for Ken, Casey?
No, I'm, I'm happy to have you kind of look through, consolidate, and then get them on the calendar.
Yep. They were coming in up until, you know, this afternoon. So, that's why I didn't really have a chance to do a lot of, you know, with the input that I've had from all the commissioners.
What was really, when I put those together, what was really interesting to me, when Commissioner Starett and Commissioner Kula sent them to me, and then I looked at mine, I was really surprised how many of them that we all three had on our, in some form or another, that all three of us as commissioners had them all on our agenda. So, I think a lot of them, we all see the same priorities through the county, because we all had them on our list one way or, one way or another, so. Okay, thank you very much, Ken.
All right.
Okay, that, then, we'll move into our informal session. It's 10 after 2. First thing, it's reserved for briefings, receipt of reports. But I will ask if anybody, normally I say we, we don't take testimony on Tuesdays, but if anybody wants to provide any testimony before we get to our department reports, I'll entertain any, anybody, public com, not testimony, public comments. Anybody want to provide any public comments? Hearing none, let's move on to our department first. The first one up is the district attorney's office.
Do you want to make that a regular habit? Because I suspect that people may want to know about it.
I'm, I'm just a little confused by that. You were asking for public comment?
On whether we're, I have, basically, there was anybody in the audience that wanted to provide public comment. We don't have to, but there's nothing saying we can't either.
That's true.
But I think that's one of the things we'll look at later, so I just add, we haven't had anybody so far, Mary, so I'm not concerned.
Thanks.
Case loads, chart title. Okay, Mr. Berry, nice seeing you again today, Mr. Berry.
Hello. Nice to see you. Commissioner Kula?
It's been a long time since, yesterday since I saw you.
It has been, it's been hours. Yes, it's hours. We missed you this morning at the EVDM meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
It's like legislature, you know.
Yes. I'm a firm believer that when the legislature's in session, nobody's safe. I think that's a twain.
Yeah.
So, thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about our department. This is, I think this is only the second or third time I've done this since you guys started these reports. So, thank you for doing it. It's actually kind of fun to sit and look at our, our department a little bit so I know what to share. I'm going to start like I usually do with the child support, support enforcement office, what I usually do with budgeting, because it's a simpler budget, share a little bit about what's going on down there. We, the staff now is all set. You may recall that we had a departure in February of, January, February of 18. We left that position vacant for a long period of time. And I did that primarily, especially for Commissioner Kula, a little history. You may recall that a few years ago, we changed the child support positions such that they, they are kind of a lower classification for a year because it really takes a new child support worker a year to get fully up, up and running on the system. And what I recognized when we did that is that the state was going to an entirely different case management and operation system. And so, we waited to hire. It didn't make sense to me to hire somebody, train them up on the old system, only to say, okay, now you can leave that all in a drawer someplace and you're going to have to do something different. So, we ended up holding off hiring until, I want to say, early fall. I don't remember the exact date. And that's when Mark was hired. He's been doing a great job. The staff did two weeks of training in December. They were out of the office completely. We shut the office down. They had backup systems set up so our customers could call. But we were basically locked out of the system for about a month before that, where they were stopping all modifications and everything for the, to get everybody trained up on the new Origin. It's called Origin System. And our staff did two full weeks of training on that, came back from that training, and we went live with the new system, not yesterday, but a week ago, Monday. And they've been working on that. We actually have people in from the, from Deloitte, who are the manufacturers of the software, and trainers from the state, and one or more working with us for several weeks to get all of our staff up to date. I had a concern just from a management perspective, that they do training in December and then sit without using it at all for two months. And I don't, I won't speak for them, but I'm kind of worthless if I have new processes that I'm learning, if I'm not using them all the time. So, I was very happy to know that we'll have those folks with us. The trainers will be, literally, they're in the office now. We have two of them in the office this week. I think we're going to have two next week, and then we'll have one for a few more weeks after that. Probably the biggest thing there is we've seen what, it's just difficult managing that department from a different floor. And I know there's going to be, I'm going to talk more about space in a minute, I know there's going to be space studies, but there are going to be things that I think, we'll start by working with Commissioner Olson, our liaison, on some, you know, what can we do about that? How do we best implement management changes there? But it's really hard for them to have offsite management. It's hard for my managers to manage from a different floor when you're not close in and there all the time. I know there had been some hope when we originally moved from this floor to the first floor, that we'd be able to combine child support office with our office, but there just wasn't enough room at the time, and there certainly isn't now. So, with that, I'm going to kind of pop upstairs then and go to the criminal office and talk a little bit about that. As you know, we were fortunate enough to receive one of the supplemental JRI, Justice Reinvestment Grants. And that, the, you may recall that the legislative session in 17, very late in the session, it was in June of 17, actually authorized the additional $7 million statewide for additional JRI funding. And those were for competitive grants versus the other grants on JRI funding were primarily dispersed similarly to grant and aid to community corrections. And as you also know, most of the money that the, that your criminal justice leadership has dealt with on JRI funding, most of that money has gone into two places, both in the DCJ budget. That's been primarily with probation officers and then secondarily with doing the pretrial processes that we've developed. And really, as a team, and I give kudos to DCJ for carrying the water on this, mostly we're, we're kind of a shining star in the pretrial processes here and other counties are looking at what we do. But the supplemental grant came through. We applied for it, and as you may recall, we applied to pay for an attorney. So, the, it wasn't authorized until late in June, which meant, starting July 1, the money should have been available. They actually were not available until the competitive grant process was completed in October. And the check didn't actually come to the, to the county until late December of 2017. So, then, when we go to hire, and we, and as you might recall, we had an attorney go into the position and then she left. So, we really did not get a running start at it until April. So, I've already had discussions with the CJC. They recognize that we're not the only ones behind on spending the money. And we have until the end of this year to spend the money, yes, December of 2019, to spend the money. And when we get talking budgets here in another few weeks, as we come back before you, you'll see how we've accounted for that at that time. I have been, the governor's recommended budget, so the GRB included 39 million for the JRI monies from what is estimated for continuing service level with inflation over before, should be 43. So, it's relatively close, but it's 4 million short of those funds. But I've also been told by three different people who know that the governor did include another 7 million for supplemental JRI funding. It's just not labeled that way anyplace that I've been able to see. So, our hope is that we'll continue to have that. As you know, when we took the original grant, I'm not one to take grants for personnel, but we did it thinking that, one, we needed it. We needed the additional resources. And Commissioner Olson was my liaison at the time, hoping if we could show that in fact, we've been judicious about its use, if ultimately we need to add more, we'll come back to you and explain why we need to. But I'm, I'm optimistic that we should be able to get another two years funding, but we'll wait and see. We won't know, obviously, until June again, or maybe even later, depending on, I'm assuming we'll have to compete again, and so, it'll put us into late summer or early fall. The, the position is currently held by Micah Johnstone. He has done a really good job. One of the things, you know, the principal thing that the CJC is looking at is our, I'm going to use the term again, judicious use of prison beds. And we have been very aggressive at looking, what are these individuals that we think we can manage in the community? And our partnership with DCJ, our defendant analysis reports have all done a really good job of identifying those. I say a really good job because many of the people who we've given departure sentences, not going presumptive prison sentences, have actually done fairly well. We've had those who have violated and end up going to prison. We've had those who committed new crimes. That's, that's the one thing that we're hoping doesn't happen. But we can't ignore that when we're dealing with higher risk individuals and we're taking higher risks with those individuals, some are going to fail. some are going to fail. And that, in fact, has happened. Fortunately, we haven't had any violent crimes to date. I wanted to spend a little time talking about our caseloads, because I'm going to talk here about overall staffing in a couple of minutes. And the chart I gave you shows our, several things, and I'll kind of explain to you what that is. Going from the set of charts to the left to the set of charts on the far right, the left shows the number of cases that were referred to us in a calendar year. And I started in '13, basically giving you the last five years, '13 through '18, on that. And you'll see the trend has been that we are having increasing referrals to the office. Now, a case referred to us means that it's sent to us for review. We don't file everything that comes to us. So, the next set of bar, the next bar graphs there actually show the growth in cases filed in the office through the same time period. Then if you go to the next chart, it shows misdemeanors, and then the far chart is felonies. And this takes a little bit of explanation. You'll note in the misdemeanors, there was a pretty good jump from '17 to '18, from 1,210 to 1,486. And in the same timeframe, we've had a drop from 801 to 647 in felonies.
That is primarily due to the legislature reducing possession of controlled substances from felonies to misdemeanors.
It's important to note there, though, and as I was looking at the numbers, and I like looking at my numbers, I pull them several times a year to see how we're doing year to year and month to month. But as I pulled this for you guys, I looked at it, and the increase in misdemeanors is not as, is, I'm sorry, is higher than the decrease in felonies. So, we know we pulled the PCSs off of the felony desk, felony filing, and put them over in misdemeanors, but we're still seeing increased filings in felonies. The bar chart just looks funny, because we took that whole group of cases away. So, what I did, I took a moment to kind of look at our stats. So, from 2013 to 2018, we had a 27% increase in referrals in that five-year period. In the same period, we had a 48% increase in filings. Now, from '13 to through '17, and I excised '18 because of this change in the law, it's going to take us a couple of years to let those settle out and see how we're doing. So, from '13 to '17, we had a 32% increase in felonies and a 44% increase in misdemeanors. And again, that excludes '18, because '18 has that huge change in case filings. But as you can see, we've had significant growth through that period of time. We've known it. I will tell you, from a management perspective, I can just, you can feel the heat in the office, if that makes sense, as things, as we're increasing more pressures on us, there are more pressures on the court docket that we're trying to cover, the more cases you have, the more cases are loaded up. The courts are certainly struggling on getting our cases scheduled in a timely manner. But we find with four judges, and the more they get behind, they start sticking things in anywhere they can. And we have lawyers upstairs all the time. When it used to be, we'd have set times, and the lawyers could spend more time at their desk, hand off some stuff, but we are getting less and less of the ability to do that. Now, our caseloads are growing, and it's hard to put my finger on all of the reasons. One that we're certainly aware of is the increased use and abuse of opioids. That's not news to anybody in this room, but it certainly is driving some of our property offenses, much as meth did for the first 10-plus years of my career in this job. But having said that, meth still drives our property crimes. So, we have, now we have kind of a dual, heavy use of drugs, which continue to push property crimes. With that, now, as I mentioned, we've got the additional attorney, but where we really have found that we are struggling is in, generically, our support staff. I put demands on my staff related to my ability to manage the office. And those are things like, how quickly are we entering information into the system? And I know Rick is a computer guy, but until the information is in, is in there accurately and timely, it's very difficult to get any snapshot of where you are. One of the things I pressure everybody in the office is, is time to disposition. Quick justice is better justice. There's just no question about it. Delayed justice often ends up with no justice. We lose witnesses, we lose victims on those cases. And so, I strive to have them get these cases resolved as quickly as they can in a just and fair way. And I routinely monitor the attorneys with how long it's taking them to get their cases to resolution. Now, some more serious cases, Kate is sitting behind, Misha currently has on our desk several homicide cases, those you have to take out of the mix, because they're completely different. But our more run-of-the-mill cases that we have, drug cases, property cases, the more routine things that we have, we should easily be able to keep those within certain timeframes. And I watch those timeframes. Having said that, the back burner for my support staff, because they have other things that are on fire on the front burner, their ability to close cases out has to sit over here, and they get to it when they can. I can't make a determination how long we take getting cases to disposition when a case is sitting on somebody's desk for a month before it's literally closed. So, we have recognized that our staff struggles to keep up with the demands of the lawyers, struggles to keep up with just the daily demands in the office. And when we get talking about our genuine needs, our needs today are in that area. Now, I don't have the budget for it. I didn't put it in my budget, but it will be something that I'll be talking with you guys about. You know, typically, we get much further in the budget process before, I'll speak for myself, only before, as a manager, I have any idea of what you guys have that you've put aside for, what do we want to do with this? What extra money should we spend, and what's the reasoning for it? And those will be conversations that I would expect to have with you. The other thing that goes along with this is, we are totally out of space in the office. And again, I know you're doing the space needs study, but I did want to share with you kind of where we've been before, and Commissioner Sterrett's been here the longest, but I don't even know that she's heard this, but as you all know, having been in my office, we're in a big U shape with a hallway down the middle. And I want to say, maybe Ken remembers, 10 years ago, we had put in for a remodel, which would eliminate that hallway and give us more room. I literally have one empty desk in my office, one cubicle that's empty for interns, externs, anybody, volunteers who might be in the office, let alone if we were to add a staff person, I would have nothing. We have no room. The frustrating part, when I got the approval before, when I put in for a capital improvement project, was the city put the kibosh on it and said no. I never understood that. I didn't understand why. It had to do with a fire corridor designation, but I didn't understand it. We look at, the principal thing that the fire corridor is designed to do is to have two points of egress, and we have two points of egress from any place in my office. And the public outside of a locked facility, because they can't come through ours if there's a fire in the building anyway, they have two points of egress, so I never understood it. I talked with Joe about it on two or three occasions, and I finally said, hey, Joe, who do I talk to? I want to personally take a swing at this. So, we invited the current planning director from McMinnville to come over. I got the distinct impression that kind of attitudes have changed at the city, you know, maybe just personalities and things. I didn't know what they were. But he was clear about, you know, our job should be to try to get you what you need, kind of thing. And we walked him through, told him exactly what we wanted to do and why. He took drawings back, Joe sent him electronically drawings back, reviewed them and communicated with us. He didn't see any reason why we couldn't do what we want to do. You have a capital improvement project request from me. I will tell you, it's two to three times what the expense was 10-plus years ago, which is frustrating, very frustrating to me, that we couldn't do it before when, literally, I think a lot of it would have been done in-house. We don't have the ability now. I mean, maintenance is stretched so thin to take on these major projects, I understand that. But that's one of the things that's coming at us. And we have, we have a clear need for more space. Again, from a management perspective, it's harder when I can't step out of my office and see where all my people are. You know, I literally can't. I have to do management by walking around, I refer to it, and mean, get to the other side of the office. I don't have any, you know, worries that the work isn't getting done. That's not my concern. But it's a lot, it's a lot better if you can just see how people are doing. My lawyers are great about working cases together, and that's stuff that should be rewarded, stuff I should be involved in. But I don't, I can't see them, because all but two of my lawyers aren't even in visual sight of my office. So, that's the place where we're going. I should probably put, I didn't think about this, going way back to John Crossick's era, when I first requested this, we couldn't do it because of the old HVAC system. But when the court improvement money came through eight years ago, something like that, and the HVAC system was changed, it changed our ability to do that. So, I'm hoping that that's something that will, I know you, you guys will talk with us about it, but I'm hoping that's something that we can see. So, that's kind of where we are. We've seen a lot of growth. We've absorbed a lot of growth. We're beginning to feel the strain. The strain is in the office, probably no different than a lot of departments, that's for sure.
Well, Brad, I think, you know, it's funny, you should talk about that, because I think you probably are aware that they, there's a, I believe it's a Senate bill, might be a House bill out there, that, you know, they, the state put away so much money a year for replacement of courthouses. There's a bill out there now to, in order to, like Tillamook County couldn't build their new courthouse, because they couldn't come up with the 50% matching funds. There's, that's been changed now, and hopefully it'll pass if there's a bill, that it doesn't have to be for full courthouse replacement. It could be the state will match for courthouse remodeling. And hopefully, we'll, you know, be able to get some grant money if it passes, to do those kind of things. And there's a lot of things that we need to do in our courthouse.
Commissioner, there was some discussion of that at the AOC Public Safety Committee meeting yesterday, and I'm actually not sure who said it, or if that's actually where I heard it, but something was said that I recall, said, but it wouldn't include, like, remodeling DA offices. So, it's not, it's not the courthouse, it's the court facilities. That was my impression. Now, I could be way wrong. If there's money available, let's go, you know, for, obviously, this building's been here a long time and has served the community well.
It was, we discussed that a little bit at another meeting yesterday afternoon, and it was, the issue is if, if the DA's office is an integral part of the courthouse, which most of them are anyway, then the county should qualify for that remodeling fee.
Oh, that'd be great.
So, but we're, but hopefully that'll get through. I think there's pretty good sponsors and bipartisan support, so.
Well, the state has certainly written a huge check for Multnomah County to build a new house, I'm sorry, new courthouse.
New courthouse. Courthouse.
Did I say courthouse?
I thought that's what you said, is courthouse. Okay, any other questions for the DA?
No, thanks, Brad.
Casey, great report, Brad. It was glad to see you again. These are, these are very helpful, so thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, then our next department, we'll turn it over to the sheriff, and we'll turn it over to Brian. I think they're going to both do one on emergency, emergency management in the sheriff's office, so. Welcome, Sheriff, Brian.
Is this on?
Yes. So, I'm just going to talk just real quick, just kind of a high-level overview of some of the stuff going on emergency management-wise. Brian, obviously, he's got all the bells and whistles, and he knows what's going on. Some of the conversations he and I have had have to do with some of the stuff going on at the state. Now, there's a couple legislative concepts out there to assist with some additional funding and/or different ways to fund emergency management across the state. And as you are well aware, emergency management is a, one of the mandated functions that the state puts back on the county. In our case, you have passed that on to our office, and as you'll see in our presentations in April, it's not cheap to run emergency management. So, some of the legislative concepts will be focused around better use of that money across the state. Could mean that we ultimately get a flat rate. It might be less than what we're currently receiving right now, which every year seems to go down a little bit more. But the common theme across the state is, as they take this program and they start to open it up to more and more people that are eligible to apply, it limits that pot of money that comes across. And I think Brian has done an excellent job of taking what we have available to us in Yamal County and doing the best with what we have moving forward. So, I'm going to give him an opportunity to pretty much talk about all the good stuff. I just wanted to remind you that the state keeps looking at this concept, and it's another one of those, Commissioner Sterrett unfunded mandates that they like to push down on us. And it's a little frustrating, coming from, you know, my perspective, because our county needs that protection. And the state continues to try to find ways to involve more people, and I think what they need to do is restrict it down to very specific entities. We have the same responsibility of our county as Multnomah County, or Marion County, or even a city of Salem. And some of those areas are receiving a lot more funding, just based off the size of the cities than what we do for our entire county, so.
Brian? I'm a, I could talk about the bad stuff, too, but I'm a half, glasses-half-full kind of guy, so we'll get to the good stuff. Happy rainy Tuesday to you. I don't think it would be an emergency management briefing or update if we didn't talk about some of the weather today. We do have some localized flooding out in the county. Most of the traditional hotspots, if you will, Gopher Valley Road, Old Sheridan Road. In fact, on Gopher Valley, one resident is being evacuated. Fire Department's pulling him out. There's no access inner or into or out of the property because of the high water. It's a, my, coincidentally enough, my brother-in-law, or I'm sorry, my stepbrother used to live there, so it flooded. It's always been a problem. So, other than that, that's about the only person, that's where the resident is being affected. North Valley Road and Dupie Valley Road. So, the extreme ends of the county where you're up against some hilly areas are...
Except for Public Works just put out word that Old Sheridan Road is temporarily closed because of high water as well.
Yeah, that's one of those.
Yeah, that was what you mentioned.
That was breaking news.
Right at the bridge, probably.
That's my phone.
The little bridge.
Way to take one for the team. So, that's where we're at today. Again, I appreciate you allowing me to come before you guys today. I want to talk about, much like the last time I spoke to you, I talked about some of the things we've done and some of the things that we have planned. They're going to, they're going to kind of mesh together in this, no defined separation. So, with that, I'll just go ahead and start. Emergency management has signed on with a letter of support with Benton County taking this, taking the lead in writing a grant for the State Homeland Security Grant. And that's for the six counties in the Oregon Region 1 area, so we can bring position-specific training to the counties for operations section chief, logistics, planning, all the EOC and incident command post training positions. They're hard to come by, and they're expensive, so hopefully, we can get a region-wide funding to be able to bring that closer to us, so we don't have to have that big expense going out for travel and overnight stay. But what it'll also do is it'll allow the training to come to other departments in the county and not just be your typical response agencies, fire and police. It brings it to other departments, so they can, they can backfill and lower the burden on those response agencies who are going to be concentrating and spread pretty thin themselves. We have a letter of support with the Grand Ron, Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron, on a regional equipment storage and prepositioning State Homeland Security Grant. And that's step one in, in kind of a concept that I'm bringing to the schools in the county about prepositioning or staging of shelter materials, the cots, the blankets, the hygiene items, handheld ham radios, things that don't, they're non-perishable, so we don't have to worry about rodents and things like that. But obviously, in a cascade event, the shelter folks that we rely on, the Red Cross, are going to have some difficulty getting to us. So, if we could preposition those and be able to utilize those in that time, I think it's a win-win. I've had conversations with Dog Ami, and it's well overdue, but we're talking about getting new LiDAR flights over Yamhill County to reassess the natural hazards that are in the county and bring them up to, I guess, what I can equate as current technology. I mean, it's been well over 15 years since any flights like that have taken place over the county, so we could potentially be looking at a better hazard analysis, or it could certainly be worse if they discover new faults or new landslides, new floodings. But there's some things that, positives that can come out of that in realigning floodplains and the boundaries there. We might, we might come out ahead there. So, I don't have a specific timeline on when that's supposed to take place, but they're really wanting to do it. I'm involved in a proof of concept, or emergency management is involved in a proof of concept with Marion County, Columbia County, and it's funded by the Department of Administrative Services, the state, on a proof of concept for damage assessments. Currently, we don't have anything that's really set where our assessors and our building inspectors can go out and fill a form that, especially electronically, be able to fill that form out electronically, feed it in either by cell, by Wi-Fi when they get back, if there's no cell network, or manually input it after the fact, and pictures, and it auto-populates the FEMA forms, streamlines... And it auto-populates the FEMA forms, streamlines the, the process of going from the field to emergency management to the state and ultimately to FEMA. And it's all three parts of the process because we do have to have the initial damage assessment before FEMA comes in and does preliminary. And ultimately, that affects reimbursements. So, um, if we can streamline that and actually get that to be a state-funded program, um, then we don't have to, uh, we'll be, we'll have continuity across the state and we won't have to have any, any capital outlay, if you will. Um, two years ago, I came forward and I said one of my goals was to become a 300, ICS 300, 400 instructor. Uh, last week that happened, so I'm now an instructor and can instruct those locally. Um, although I will request that we wait until after I can be kind of a adjunct instructor so I can get a little bit of experience under my belt, so be patient, but it's pretty exciting. There's some other things that, other, uh, courses that are also involved in that also. Uh, been working closely with the schools. To date, we've had two active shooter trainings with Amity School District and Sheridan School District. And the, and the, the type of this training is not for law enforcement benefit, it's for the schools. It's for their staff to, to see, hear, smell, feel what it's like to have a, a gun, in this case, a AR-15 that shoots blanks, what it sounds like in the hallway, so they, they understand what to do. Um, they're drilled with, with, uh, I almost said department, but district policies and procedures and, and really, really kind of formed to, to make sure that they follow those procedures. Those procedures are in place for a reason and ultimately it's their safety. So we're just a good partner in this and, uh, we bring in deputies and they, they walk through it and, and again, it's for their benefit. So it's, it's kind of a cool, cool project. Uh, along those lines, the, the school EOP, the common EOP that we've been working on, finalized, released tomorrow for their board, board approvals when their boards need a meet for the next time. And I don't know, have a schedule on that, but that's pretty exciting. Six of the seven will be moving in the same direction. We are, speaking of EOPs, emergency operations plans, we're updating ours in-house this year. Um, it's kind, it's not, it's, it's kind of a cumbersome project in that the goal that we have is to try and reduce the, the amount of pages that are in that document. If you really look at an emergency operations plan, I'm, I'm a proponent of a policy manual and a procedure manual, and the two shouldn't mix. But, but obviously you're going to have those, those, uh, some mixing of that. But when you look at a several hundred-page document compared to Columbia County, who is 84 pages and that includes the ESFs, that's quite the drastic difference. And what it does is it allows us to get the same information out and it's not so, so tedious or burdensome on the person who has to, you know, look at it at the last minute, you know, they're just activated and they're filling in an EOC position and they're getting just-in-time training and you give them a book that's two inches thick and they're like, what do I do with this? So if we can checklist it and reduce the, the size of it, then I think, uh, we'll be, we'll be money ahead. Um, we're waiting patiently for our Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Funding. There was some leftover funds from a previous declared disaster in the state. Uh, Oregon, uh, I'm sorry, University of Oregon was going to be the, the facilitators in that update for the county. They're willing to do it. They're waiting patiently also to get this project started. Um, so hopefully we'll have word on that soon. Another cumbersome project that involves a lot of the agencies and municipalities, or all of them, all the ones that want to participate. So, uh, look forward to that. Uh, we're excited about our move coming up, so, yeah. Move out from the subterranean dweller, please. Not ungrateful. Um, we do have bids out for the generator install. Um, those have just come in Friday. There's two bidders that, that answered, answered the call. Uh, I have not had a chance to look through those, so it'll be, it'll be fun to look through those and, and get moving in one direction. And also, I believe it's two more weeks and, and the bids for the remodel of the floor plan are due also. And I, I appreciate Joe Moore, uh, helping out in that. He's, he's been a invaluable partner in that. Uh, we have a three-day exercise, end of April, medical countermeasures exercise, uh, based on a terroristic, or a terrorist event in Portland. Uh, it, it's been awesome to work with public health in this and designing and crafting what our local response is going to be and then also being involved in the planning section or the, the planning piece at the regional level, the CRI, the City Readiness Initiative level. Um, uh, it's, it's good to work together with people that I don't normally work with in, as emergency management. Public health, it's, it's, it's own entity, but, but working close, close together is, is, has been pretty cool. It's, it's exciting. Uh, State Homeland Security Grants, all three applicants or, or all three applications were accepted the other day by the state, so they're good to go. Good luck to you all. Um, I'm just glad that's turned in and that stress is, is relieved. I'm always kind of a little nervous that there's going to be a last-minute change at the state level, then what do I do? Public Health is close, or I'm sorry, I shouldn't say HHS, is close to implementing Everbridge for their internal communications. We've been training with them and getting, uh, cheat sheets and, and guidebooks made so we can sit down. That should be in the next week and a half. I think we sit down and do the, the hardcore training on, on the data managers so they can, people leave, people come, people go, employees come and go, they can manage the, the personnel in there. Um, and last on that, before the legislation, is the island map. We are hoping to get that done soon. Uh, obviously, a lot of things have come up, uh, in, in the interim and, um, I think there's probably more, but I, I don't want to waste too much of your time. But, um, we're trying to get that finalized and, and for those of you that don't know the island map concept, it's a planning tool that shows the islands of the county post Cascadia event with the bridges going out and roughly 14 islands throughout, throughout the county. Um, and again, it's a planning tool and, and one that can definitely be a good, uh, conversation starter. Onto the legislation piece, that there's two bills that are being proposed that can impact us positively and I don't, and I say negatively, just in that it would be a status quo deal, um, but, but it'll be interesting to follow. House Bill 2564, it directs, um, Oregon Emergency Management to distribute monies by a formula rather than a competitive process when it comes to State Homeland Security Grants. Uh, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out because there are, there's language in that bill that allows them to make the rules in certain, and, and there'll be some feedback, I think, um, from Oregon Emergency Management Association, you know, and, and some of the, some of the key stakeholders. So I'll continue to watch that and, and, uh, see where that goes. Uh, House Bill 2565 allocates by language, current, current language is $3.6 million be granted to counties for the purpose of hiring personnel. As the sheriff mentioned a few minutes ago, um, that Yamhill County is bound to do, perform the same duties that any county in the state is. And that's plan, this plan, that plan, maintain it, public outreach, EMPG if they want to, to participate in EMPG grant funding. Um, you know, we're required to do that already. If you look at, um, metro area agencies, they, they get funds from UASI, for, for example. Um, you know, so they get additional funds to the tune of millions of dollars to, to staff folks. I think, uh, Marion County has a staff of five or six people, uh, in theirs and, and I'm not looking to just add staff to add staff, but, but the way that they're crafting this is it would be interesting to bring on, in my mind, it would be interesting to bring on a person that could do exercise in planning and that all they do, that's all they do is plans update and it's a rolling stock, you know, they just keep up with it and, and exercise design and that's it. Um, but it, it'll be interesting. If it doesn't pan out, then, then I don't think we're hurt anyway. But those are the two highlighted bills that are, that are coming ahead.
Okay, any question for Brian and Mary?
Can you give us an update? Sheriff and I were talking earlier about Everbridge and, and, uh, what we can expect in terms of, of, of interest or people who've signed on. It's not as much as I had hoped at this point, but Sheriff had a great idea of how we could get more people to...
You have to have a minor disaster.
Just a little something.
Just a small.
Get their attention.
We may get that with this, uh, with the flooding.
Or the snow.
If you recall, if you recall, two days before the release date, we, we had a pre-staged event, it was called a 3.9 earthquake. Remember that?
Yes, I do.
So, yeah, I had, I talked to my people about that. Um, actually, that's exactly what it takes. It takes these larger events, even not in our, uh, in our area, we can certainly message off of, um, off of other areas. It's like lessons learned in, in disasters. You know, we can learn lessons from Florida during the hurricanes. Uh, it's applying those, those across the board to all departments and getting everybody to understand their piece of the puzzle. Uh, so, so we can certainly try and market it that, that way. And it's much like the preparedness aspect of our job, the public outreach. We, I always call, I always say that we're kind of a, a slave to what the, the citizens are willing to accept. I can't force them to be two weeks ready. I can't force them to come to a, a preparedness conference or a prep fair or what, come in and watch a dynamic speaker give a great presentation on the, the hazards that we face here. And it might not be in our lifetime, but why not build that culture? I can't force anybody to do that. And that's just the same with that, that emergency notification system. So if, if we can just keep giving the word out, it's, it's a never-ending process, but one that we should just keep going with.
And you can do that, um, we, it's through your, the OEM Facebook page, right? I feel like, there's like a, a big button on it.
Through, through Yamhill County, through our Yamhill County Facebook page, Yamhill County Emergency Management and our, um, homepage on the county website.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And it's, uh, it's, it's simple.
Very simple. If I could do it, it's going to be very simple.
I was just wondering if we could have like a QR code somewhere on one of our documents that go out, like the tax assessor documents, something like that.
Well, you're talking a lot.
Something to look at.
You just want to scan it, huh?
Well, it's, I mean, I, we joke about these little mini incidences, but this would be a perfect example for the localized flooding. To be able to have the ability to have Public Works give the EM, uh, a list of areas that we're seeing issues in and send it out through Everbridge for those areas that aren't tracking them, so that they know what's going on. And unfortunately, it takes these type of scenarios where we can show them that this is a perfect example of what this could be used for in order for people to get into it and start pushing it, so.
And there's a healthy, or there's a, there's a balance that we have. We have to weigh over notifying versus under notifying because we certainly don't want to, you know, build a complacency in folks, uh, but we want them to be, to be notified. So the sheriff was spot-on, you know, localized, the localized flooding pieces, you know, could, it's, it's coming up with those messages and getting the information.
Yeah. I confess that I go, I do Yamco Watch a lot. It's good that other people are laughing in the room. And then on the island, we have Grand Island 911, uh, which is just like a Facebook group. But those are incredibly powerful, so if we can get more people on to the, the county by one, for sure.
You say Yamco Watch like it's not a badge of honor. There's nothing wrong with that, so they're, they, they're well-connected.
They put a lot of stuff in.
Yeah, I'm amazed by them.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you for doing the extra training. I know that's not easy to fit in with everything else you're doing, um, so thank you for that.
He smiles through busyness, is what I'm...
You got anything for Brian, Casey, or for the sheriff?
No, I, I, thank you.
I'll tell you, I've seen, you know, being an old firefighter, I've seen McMinnville's attempts to do emergency management over the last 15 to 20 years through the Fire Department, Police Department. We have a real asset in our emergency management and what Brian, Brian's doing. And I think that's one of those, we need to make sure everybody understands just what kind of an asset we have and how good of a job you guys are doing. So Brian, you keep up the, keep up the great work.
We're going to miss you when you move out onto Lafayette, though.
I'll come back and visit.
What kind of coffee do you have out there?
I thought I had to bring it.
What do you do? That's why we come out there.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, we'll move on to Thursday's formal session agenda review. So, Ken, you want to talk to me about, this is something new, but, well, it's not really new. It's just attached, this is a draft attached, attached, this is a draft of Thursday's agenda.
Really busy agenda for Thursday.
You can see it's a really busy agenda for Thursday. Um, and it does really nicely say draft, so do we have, uh, any, um, any comments on the draft agenda for Thursday's meeting? Or anything that anybody can think we might want to add as new business or anything? If not, we'll go ahead then and, uh, there's, since there's no consent agenda review, since it's going to be a brief meeting, we don't have any executive session, we'll move on to Commissioner updates, announcements and discussions. So, Casey, let's start with you.
Uh, the one thing that I, I thought of just a moment ago was, um, I wanted to check in about the timing and conversations about moving to the civic hall. That was a, a thing I had, I wanted to just put out there and make sure it was still in the conversation.
Yeah, you, you can, you've discussed...
I have not had a chance to talk to Jeff yet, so...
I know you're doing lots of things.
Yeah, we know you're doing budget.
I'm walking your office all the time.
So I'll, I'll try to, you know, um, have that conversation with, uh, Mr. Towery at the city.
Sounds good.
I'll try to do that this week or it, or next week.
Okay. And then next week, um, we have the, um, Water Task Force meeting and I understand that you are not able to make it on that one, but I'll keep you up to date. I'm hoping that we do them...
What, when is that?
It's the 19th.
I didn't get that for sure.
Next Tuesday. Next Tuesday morning. Yes. You were on the list, I believe. Um, I, I had to add you because you were the original sender outer of it, so...
Right.
Add me to that. I'm not, I don't, I don't get them.
Oh, I sent it out this morning, uh, as a reminder.
Okay, I'll check that. Water Task Force.
But I'm, I'm hoping to have a follow-up meeting, um, as well for it, to kind of go over some of the planning tools that, uh, Water Resources is going to talk about.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Casey? Mary?
Uh, yes, we had our very first, uh, sort of full-scale meeting of the, our DHS project. We had, Sheriff was there, uh, Judge Easterday was there, and this is really the game plan for how we're going to improve not only child welfare, but some of the other preventive aspects. So that was really exciting to see that thing get off the ground. And also yesterday at AOC, the Legislative Committee, um, did agree to, um, support House Bill 2115, which is for the, for DHS to track and report on psychiatric medication of all foster kids. I'm excited about that. And also had a conversation with, um, our homelessness task force, McMinnville Homeless Task Force, um, for, uh, perhaps some way to help with, um, partner with Henderson House and, um, for, uh, people who are surviving domestic violence. So Kristen and Heather and Kelly Menke and I will be discussing that and then bringing something to the board hopefully very soon.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yesterday, I just come through the AOC, um, where we're moving, these are mostly board, board items, is the, um, by the first of April, we should have our forensics audit of the organization of financial books back. The preliminary audit shows there's been no malfeasance or anything from any of the officers or the ex-director of AOC. Um, so that looks good. We're going to be going out for an RFP at ASC for a new auditor. Every, they've had the same auditor for like nine years and they decide it's a good idea every three years to change auditors, so they're going to be going RFP for auditors. Um, the, the board elected yesterday, yesterday to extend, uh, Michael Elias and his interim executive director, extend his contract up through November of next year till we can, so we can get through this legislative session and decide what we're going to do for our new executive director. That was quite a lengthy discussion. Um, let's see if I can read my own writing here.
It's encrypted.
Yeah, it is actually. It's not for, the, um, the other thing about it is, is we got information, I only got one because they were short, but I will give you a link then. We got yesterday, the first group to get the governor's, um, 2017 Oregon Housing Task Force pamphlet with the six prior, priorities to address workforce housing, homelessness, uh, veterans housing. It's a very well put... It's a very well-put-together pamphlet, and the plan is a very good, very good plan. James LeVar came and spoke on that, who used to be our regional coordinator solution, spoke on that a little bit. And the other good thing is, for the county road funds, we have a commitment so far, either in the bank or committed of the $900,000 that we had to come up to pay the road fund back. We now have a commitment of $757,000. Good news is Jackson County has rejoined AOC, and they have agreed to pay their share of the back fees because they were using the Oregon Road Fund to pay their share of the back fees. So we're hoping by maybe June or July, we'll have everything, everything back to the road fund. So other than that, the other thing is I think we're gonna be, if everybody's keeping up with legislative sessions, quite a few legislative bills that are of great interest to Yamhill County. AOC yesterday, I think, I forget how many total legislative committee we supported and how many we opposed, but this is the first year I've been to AOC where all the committees, the General Legislative Committee, took almost every recommendation of every working committee there was, and the work, the working committees did this here, the Health and Human Services, Veterans Affairs, Federal Lands and everything. We're just, the research was just wonderful. And so we have a pretty good legislative state, and I think it's supposed to be fine.